I'd like to call the Regular Board of Education meeting in order on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Please stand for question.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Role call, Kelly?
Ms. Betterbid?
Excuse.
Mr. Caslay out.
Taking delayed.
Ms. Lynn?
Delayed.
Mr. Rakowski?
Here.
Ms. Stadler?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Ms. Uer?
Excused.
Mr. White?
Here. All right, fire assessment, X's or in the back of the LGI. All right, tonight we have a workshop on budget overview and that's going to be Dr. Landau, I think, with some assistance.
Yeah, Emery and I. Emery and I wanted to just kick off the budget workshop cycle with just some overview information tonight. So, just, this is kind of a reminder that we try to base all of our budget work and the work that we did last year in creating a mission statement, creating a strategic plan, and also focusing on the board goals with everything that we do. And then, these belief statements stemming from the mission come from, come from the language of some of our board goals. And then, the work that we're doing in classrooms in our schools focus on all of our graduates having these skills, abilities, and attributes. So, a focus on communication, problem solving, creative and critical thinking, collaboration, independence, digital literacy. And then, these attributes, empathy, self-regulation, citizenship, community, curiosity, wonder, on imagination, and adaptability, and flexibility. So, how does a budget reflect this? A few different ways, and this is just a little snapshot of last year's budget, but we wanted to remind folks some of the things we accomplished in last year's budget. Over the last, including this year, I'm looking at the last three years, we focused on doing a lot of elementary class size reductions. So, we did one more position last, in this year's budget, to bring elementary classes. Our average is right between eighteen and nineteen, and so, we're really proud of that work, and that's pretty consistent across, across all four of our schools. We added an additional social worker to Beacon High School. We added a halftime art teacher to Beacon High School. We also added the position, we still have not found the right person for this, business teacher, to begin a business program. That is kind of a high, I don't know the way we're going to say it, but there are not a lot of people with that certification, and not a lot of people answering the job postings we're putting out. We're still working on that search. We also did a lot of increased professional development that I think really reflected board goals and what we want to see in our graduates. We had summer workshops for teachers that focus on student engagement, summer workshops that focus on implementation of things like responsive classroom, restorative practices. And then, also, we had, and this part is ongoing because it's continued in this year, our equity teams in all of our buildings did something this summer, and we're still continuing this work on something called the dignity framework. And that really is both trying to meet board goals and our strategic plan. And then, we also, in this year's budget, supported the one-to-one implementation. We finished that implementation in the high school. Now, there's also a chrome book for every elementary student. Elementary students are not taking it home with them, but our, but our middle school and high school students are, and that continues to go well. You had, we had an update from Mike Healy, our technology director, a few weeks ago, and that was a large, our technology budget was a little larger last year, trying to finish the one-to-one implementation at the high school. So, those are just, few of the highlights. I always say that a budget reflects the beliefs of a school district, and last year, we were really trying to add more course offerings, more emotional support for students, and also more increased professional development, and ubiquitous technology across all of our classrooms. And all of those things took place in this budget, so we were really proud of that. So, Emery has been working on just providing some overview information about the budget and using a new tool. And so, one of our goals for tonight is to share with you some of this overview information, but also to collect questions from you that we can answer at a future board meeting, because we know that we're just starting this process. After tonight, our departments will start presenting at our next board meeting. We have athletics and technology presenting their budget initiatives for the two thousand and twenty-one school year, and we'll be kind of marching through all of our board meetings through, through the month of March, updating on different aspects of the budget. So, Emery.
Thanks. So, what we know so far, we know going into the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one budget, we have eight teacher retirements, which has a financial impact just on the breakage of salaries, so that's helpful when we're creating our budget. We know our TRS rate will be a little bit higher than it was in two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year, so we need to make sure that, you know, we budget appropriately for that as well.
And TRS is?
Teacher's retirement system. Employees' retirement system is not out yet, so when that information comes available, I'll share that as well. The next two things have to do with the tax cap. So, again, Beacon is, are receiving a favorable tax-based growth factor. At a future meeting, I'll talk about the tax cap and where we are, but because, again, of our increase in properties in Beacon, we are, we will be able to raise our levy a little bit higher because of that. The CPI estimate is a small amount, under two percent. In fact, on Wednesday will be the final CPI, and you know, the CPI is involved also in the tax cap calculation. So, both of those things will help us assist in that, and we'll know a little bit more going forward. And although the governor had his state-of-the-state address, you know, I was disappointed we didn't get state aid runs yet, but it is a little bit early in January, so as soon as those come forward, at least we have a starting point for state aid, so we then can move forward. So, Dr. Landau mentioned that we have a new tool. We're using Forecast Five, which has a lot of different modules, a lot of pie charts. It's helpful for historic information, and it's also helpful for forecasting. So, we just thought we'd show you a little bit of the historical, and now we're going to move forward working on the forecasting part. I thought this was interesting because it shows basically the revenue of the district. This shows more, so certain locals, so the orange, the forty-one percent is the state aid, and the fifty-seven percent is the tax levy. So, as we go forward and the state aid is becoming, the percentage is slightly decreasing each year where the levy portion is coming from. Transfers and federal, federal would be the federal grants, the small little red line, and the green transfers, as you remember, in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we used a lot of the transfer from reserves to pay for things that were going on here in the high school, summer remediation work. So, that's why that number looks a little bit higher than the green. You won't see that as we go forward. We didn't do that in nineteen, twenty.
So, what are some of the things, not to give too much detail, what are some of the things that the state fund versus our, you know, web of levy funds?
It's not broken, so I, we use it as a total bucket of money, so how it's paid for, so it's not specific to, you know, the state paying for some, and the taxpayers paying for something. It's the revenue together paying for the entire budget.
So, the state portion is not necessarily specifically tied to things at Beacon that are different from other school districts?
Right. It's just a revenue source. So, you know, in a school district, you really don't have too many revenue sources. It's mainly levy, and I'll show you in the next slide. I just kind of flipped out by mistake.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see how we, how other districts maybe stack up. Present.
Sorry. Can you move it a second?
Escape.
Right.
And then, you present.
Okay, sorry. Okay. So, I'm sorry, Mike.
I have maybe a question for the future. It'd be interesting to know how other districts stack up. Are we, are they all, we're all about forty-one, fifty-seven, or, or what?
Okay. We can get that information. This is another chart just on historical property taxes, so over the last five years. And the blue portion shows us the actual real property collected from taxpayers, and the small orange piece on the top is the New York STAR aid. So, what you're seeing, what you're starting to see in the later years, in seventeen, then starting in eighteen and nineteen, the STAR revenue is becoming less and less. And as you remember, they changed the law on STAR. So, if you are a new property owner, you pay the full amount of your property taxes and you receive a check back from the state, instead of getting STAR revenue from the state. So, when you talk about the tax levy, you're always talking about the money received from the taxpayers and the STAR reimbursement. As we go forward into two thousand and twenty, you're, in nineteen, twenty, so when I do the forecasting, you're going to start seeing a significant decrease in STAR. So, you're basically getting more money from the taxpayers, the new, the new homeowners are getting money back from the state, instead of the state sending us the STAR and their property taxes. So, that might be for some reason why some people's taxes would be much higher, because they're not getting the benefit of the STAR exemption. So, when we talk about the budget process, we talk about how much people will get as far as STAR. We have to remember to, you know, since they changed the STAR law, if you sell your house and buy another house, you will have to pay the full amount of the taxes, and then the STAR, you have to apply to the state to get a check back. So, that's a little bit different going forward.
Okay.
Okay? So, that could, that could be some, you know, I had some questions about the school tax bills, and some of it was assessment-related, but some of it was, people didn't understand that they had to apply for the STAR exemption from, striking from the state.
Who can people contact in the school district if they have questions about their tax bill?
They can contact the tax collector, but anything to do with STAR, they, they contact the city of Beacon, the tax assessor's office. Because the STAR, all the applications and stuff all are done through.
So, the tax, so the city of Beacon tax assessor, or the Fishkill tax assessor, or whatever town they're in, would be able to speak to them about their school district tax?
Their STAR reimbursement.
Oh, but what about their school district?
Their school district taxes, they, they contact the tax collector or myself if they have a question specific.
Or yourself.
Yeah. And this, this is just a bar chart and a simple thing of where our historic state aid is. So, we do see it progressively going up, but not as much of an incline as we've seen in the past. So, once we get some information, even on an estimate on a go-forward basis, we can kind of keep track of what the state aid portion is, will be.
And Emery, this is where we are last year, or in two thousand and eighteen, that's pretty similar to where we were in two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine?
Um.
Wasn't there a big drop-off then?
In state aid, when the foundation aid formula changed, yes.
Has like the two thousand and eight, like, two thousand and eighteen brought us back to where that drop-off was?
Yes. This is the historic information I have in the computer, but I can go back and go further to show, illustrate that. So, this is just a pie chart of actual, so eighteen, nineteen, actual. I thought this was important because, and you know, we know we are a people business, but this pie chart actually kind of shows that. So, salary and benefits make up the major portion of our budget. Our debt service is at nine point oh nine percent, so the other objects would be everything else that's not salary and benefit related would be in the green area. So, there's really not a lot of money on top of paying for people to be here that we have a lot of control over.
Is that nineteen point five, like, administrative, or is that built into the salaries and benefits?
Salaries and benefits are total in the district.
A total of admin, and teachers, and support staff, everything?
Everybody, yes. And this chart just shows it in a different way, it's more of a bar chart. And again, you know, just to kind of see, the number in the orange is really the number that will pay for furniture and books and everything else that a student needs after, you know, covering for the salaries and the benefits of the teachers and the debt service. So, these kind of charts, I think, are helpful just to kind of see where we are and where we're going. We will, we will start giving you forecasts in, so where we are this year as opposed, you know, as of the current date, and what we believe will happen in the, in the next three years after that. So, that will be more information coming in future meetings.
So, the debt service is fairly steady, right? I think we try to keep it steady when you look at expenditure and capital?
Yeah, so the debt service is, is really the way that we, we want to keep it steady because we want to make sure that that's how we actually will fund a capital project. So, when we know on a debt service is, that debt is going to fall off, is the timing that we have the capital project, so that the debt will go on when we know another piece of it will fall off, so we can kind of keep it steady. Does anybody have any questions or some information they may like to see in the future?
This is good, and I would like to have copies of this slideshow sent to us so we can absorb it and quote from it if we need to. There's some chatter that goes on in various forums alleging that there were some really large tax increases. I think you've given some good insight there with the STAR situation. Some people apparently aren't aware of how it affects them, but there are others that it doesn't affect at all. And, but there was quite an increase in assessments, which is not the doing of the district, that's the doing of the city of Beacon, the town of Wapangir, the town of Fishkill, which controls their own assessments. Could you address that a bit and say what we've seen there and how that may have affected some people's personal tax bills?
The total assessments, especially for the city of Beacon, have increased, so I just get a total number of that. So, it's either a reflection of individual taxpayers' assessments on their home, but it also may include new properties that are coming on the tax roll. And you know, in the city of Beacon, that is going to be something that's going, going to happen over the next couple of years. As far as the increase in assessment, that's really, as you mentioned, a tax assessor's view. So, the important thing that I think people need to understand is when the school district does their tax levy, it's a finite number. It is what it is. It is what they vote on in May. We don't get more money because there's, you know, a higher assessment on someone's house. For the person that had higher assessment, there are other people whose assessments have gone down or stayed the same. The ones that stayed the same from year to year, because the tax rate decreased, would actually have seen a small decrease in their taxes. But I did hear from taxpayers whose assessments were increased, so it was very difficult for them to understand when we spoke about the tax rate going down, why their taxes didn't actually go down. So, I think going forward, make sure, make that a little bit clearer in the budget presentation, so that people don't expect a refund or expect a lower amount and not have it.
So, just to follow up on Craig's comment, I mean, we do have a, do you have an election and budget website that we set up every year for the next May? Craig, are you suggesting to have this PowerPoint PDF and put on the website, or?
Well, I think it's good information that people, many people would not absorb that very well, but those who can may be able to make some benefit out of it. I mean, for my own purposes, I like to see that because it helps me fix my understanding of how things are working, be able to better discuss it with people.
Is that, is that a problem making?
No. In fact, this will be the first of many. So, we have been putting up the presentations once the directors of the departments come and present, and we put them up as PDFs in the budget area.
Thank you very much. I have a question with the tax-based growth factor?
Yes.
So, that obviously recognizes, you know, increased development and valuation, I guess, in the city of Beacon. Have we looked to see how, how the growth factor compares with the, with the amount of total, you know, the growth factor is a projection, did it, did it line up with the actual grand list or the actual total, what's the number, the big number?
Of the assessment value?
The assessment value, does it, is it going, are they, are they aligned with each other, or are we, are we raising our levy faster than, than the property that are coming online, you know?
So, the growth fa, right, so the growth factor allows us to increase the levy?
Right.
And you're saying, how does that compare with the increase in assessments?
Right, are they lagging, so they're still, you know, or they're still growing? We haven't caught up to where, where the growth factor says they, you know, predicts they should be going to?
I can look at that as a, as a comparison percentage. I've done the percentages on the assessments and then the growth factor separately, so I can do that calculation and say.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Got a question. I love looking at things on charts in the real person. It's impressive to see how much of our budget goes to labor. Something we talked about in the past, and I hear different rumors, or I hear different information from different sources, about where our salaries rank in comparison to other schools in that area. Something I'd really love to see moving forward is if there's some way we could look definitively, because I sometimes see, I've heard stories, and I don't know the sources, that say we're on the lower end compared to other school districts in the states, yet I've read articles that identify individual teachers in our district that are on the higher percentile. So, I'd love to see some kind of comparative assessment to make sure we're competitive with our hiring and, you know, it's on.
So, Dutchess Boses has a, has a group of people do a comparison across Dutchess County, so I haven't gotten that information yet, because it's hard for us to compare to others. We have to kind of look at, you know, the county averages and what other school districts do. But the beauty of this software package is that we can forecast a percentage across the board and kind of see where we are and how that will, that will, you know, help us or hurt us kind of thing.
Yeah.
So, we can bring that forward as we go forward in the budget process.
That would be, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, that's different than the per capita calculation, right? Budget per capita, that we calculate, I guess that's per, right?
You mean, I'm not sure which you mean.
Well, does mailers have a, have a, have a money spent per instruction?
Per student?
Yeah.
Right. So, there's different ways to do it. They can either do an instructional budget per student, they can do total budget per student, but that's all part of what they do at Dutchess Boses when they do the comparison.
And they do per, they do per instructional staff, budget per instructional?
They've done, they do a lot of different variations. They assume CPI, they have flat, you know, so there's, it's in all of the book, they do the projections, yes.
Isn't the state starting to require districts to report the per, per pupil cost per school?
Per school, yes.
Per school district, but per school as well?
Mm-hmm. So, we had to submit our budget per school going forward, and March first, we have to do our actual numbers from eighteen, nineteen per school. So, that will be public information.
Can I just have a follow-up to, because I'm curious, is it generally considered, is there a definitive position on more money per student is considered better or less?
I don't think there's a better or worse.
Okay. Yes.
Like, I don't take it as a better or worse. I think people judge it, but I think they judge it based on their personal opinions.
Right.
So, I don't know if there's a better or worse.
Okay, I'm just curious.
In my opinion, that's just my fact.
It, it is ranked, you know, I mean, the districts in Dutchess do rank it, but, you know, it'll just be a percentage, how you kind of follow that.
It ranks basically as to, this is what the highest per pupil cost is to lowest, but I don't think that it's like a, oh, this is better or this is worse.
I guess maybe more specifically, has anyone done a comparative study to cost per pupil to success, success outcomes, test scores, graduation rate, that sort of thing?
Graduation rate is always captured as a school report card piece, so, I mean, I think that, that's public knowledge that we could look up on the websites, the nearest state report card.
Right, yeah.
So. When Boses does that kind of a comparison, is it purely on salary and/or benefit information, or does it include like stipends or anything, or other things?
Are you, you mean the cost per student, is that what you're asking?
I'm sorry, not the cost per student, but when they're comparative, how our teachers are compensated, you know, in comparison to other districts or other, around the county.
I believe it's contract salary because that's the information they ask us for. They ask us for contract salary, you know, so it's a comparison of teachers on which staff and all of that. I don't know if they get specifically, you know, total payroll or not. I can, I can check.
But I think there's a lot of variables that go along with that question, right? Because a couple of years ago, as a board, we determined that we wanted to have lower class sizes. To have that happen, we needed to hire more staff, right? Then there's other districts that may have higher class sizes, but yet pay their teachers a lot more, so the per pupil cost might be relative to the same. So, there's a lot of variables, I think, that we have to look at. I don't think it's as easy as saying, okay, this is the per pupil cost in one district versus the other. Like, I think you need to look at the staffing and all that stuff. I think there's a lot of variables that could play into that.
Right, no, I agree. And then, one thing I'm interested in is we say, oh, Beacon's the lowest that we pay, but when you look at the full package, are we not the lowest?
Yeah.
Right? You know, maybe we do stipends or other people do, you know, maybe we do different things. So, total compensation package is, because I, you know, because I don't think we're that.
All right, and stipends, like the IRPs that are on tonight, that's, it's in the contract, but it's not per their, for their final sal, annual salaries.
Right, right.
Right.
It's a benefit and a working, and it's a piece of compensation.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think there's just a lot of variables. I, I think the information's worthy, I just wanted to just caution that there's variables when we're looking at it, when we're comparing to other districts. I think that's why a historical piece from where the district was to where it is, to where it's going.
Right.
Because then it's, there's a lot less variables because it's all within the district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Matt, you said you were open to questions to like what we were looking for in the budget, future budget presentations and stuff?
Yeah.
So, one of the things that I think is, when the budget's like, I'm still going to advocate for reading and how we're addressing the reading services, so something in the budget, and I know how that it could tie to the, to our strategic plan and our goals and stuff. So, I just would like to hear what we're doing and where we see the future for the reading piece to go.
Sure.
I know that Eric reported out earlier about the benchmarking at the middle school.
Yeah.
How is that planned to go forward with it, you know, being at the elementary? Are we going to roll it out?
Yeah.
Is it more aligned to hiring more reading teachers or, or something like that? Yeah, the, I don't have the exact date in my head, but the March, the first March board meeting, I think we're focusing on the instructional slash PV budget, so we'll get into that. James, a couple of board meetings ago, you asked for us to talk more specifically about art, like what we spend for the arts, so we'll do that on that night, too. But yeah, whether it's sort of this forecasting, either projecting forward or looking back, if there's those kind of questions you want, that kind of walking out of tonight, just email the both of us, and we'll, along with the department, the departmental budget updates that will, or workshops that we'll be doing over the next few months, we'll kind of, you know, jump in and show you some more information. We already, you know, we got, I think, a good list just from tonight about things we can bring back. But yes, we will include that in the instructional part.
Okay.
And if there's things that, you know, don't, don't come to you during a board meeting, but come to you, you know, at three in the morning, or, you know, when you're exercising or whatever, just email those to us.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up to that. Would it be at all possible, is there any faculty that works in the arts program with us, either in a director capacity, you know, we don't have a director per se, or, it's always so beneficial to have somebody who's on the ground come in here and talk to us about some of the programs, what's going on?
We have an art content coordinator.
Yeah.
So.
Would they come, possibly, or?
Talk to us during the budget? That'd be interesting.
I have a sort of blanket request for, in terms of how the presentation's just, all acronyms explained. I think it's something we always get used, over time, we've gotten used to seeing, and then it just, you know, it's one of those things that I think makes it easier for the public to understand, and then easier for us to remember what we're talking about. And then, if there's a way to do like a consistent format so that we can evaluate things, like, if there was a budget, an item requested last year, like you talked about the counselor in the high school, you know, just like, like a reminder, you've already done it in this, but just a reminder of what we added last year, a sense of if that's something we're going to continue to invest in and expand, or if there's a new area of investment and explaining why, and how it fits with our goals, that would be just helpful to frame.
Okay.
And Grace, you know if you have anything that you want to see? Don't, I'd say, time it.
So, I mean, the thing that I ask is typically is, you know, what's your, what do you, what do you, what are we doing to meet the needs now, and then, I guess, what is forecast, you know, past the needs, our wants, like in five years or something like that? I know in the past, we've, we've had some good presentations as to where we are, what we need to get done, and to, to meet the minimum requirements, and then, you know, some aspirations, fact, other than that. So, that's kind of also what I want, that's what I want to see. And also, the STEM stuff, you know, not just computer science, but engineering, you know, environmental science, and even, even medical science, something like that.
I have one more question on STAR. So, if people receive the check, does that mean that they don't have the exemption? Are they, you know, are they, is it one or the other?
Yes. So, I believe the law had changed two years ago, so if you're a new homeowner, you will not see a STAR reduction on your tax bill. There's an application process for you, and you actually get the state, the check back from the state. I don't want people to confuse that with the check that they get from the state because we stay with. Um, I don't want people to confuse that with the check that they get from the state because we stay within the tax cap, cause there's also that check that goes through the state as well.
So that's different than the STAR?
Yes, everyone gets that.
Okay. That's why I was, I was kind of.
Right.
Wondering about that piece of it.
Yeah, so, um, we have to certify that we stay within the cap, all the districts that do that, and if that happens, then taxpayers do get a check from the state. So that is totally different than the STAR reimbursement.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, also, Emery, I love the, the charts and formats.
Oh, Grace, what?
Are you guys here to comment, for public comment? To the board?
I, um.
You are?
Yes.
I was wondering if, I was, I was gonna ask, make a motion to, uh.
Not necessarily on the budget.
No, it's okay, our public comment is after our executive session, I think our executive session's gonna be a little lengthier. So I was gonna make a motion to have public comment prior to our executive session and move it and see if the board agreed.
Yeah, I would make that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried. Six. No, seven, I'm sorry. All right, we're gonna open up to, to public comment.
So thank you all for allowing me to address the board. I'll state my name as Tony, and you're in consideration of a 504 program that's related to one of my children. So I know that that's confidential and I'll try to have a conversation to keep that confidence in mind. What I wanted to share with the board is that, I want you to be aware that over the last two years, my family has really struggled with, with, with my child. And a lot of this based on conversations and from what I understand, started two years ago at Rockdale Middle School. It's an experience that my, my, my child went through there. It, it was not a good experience, it was one where she was bullied, where in, from what I was told, she was mistreated. And in some cases, that happened in front of teachers and the teachers were not responsive, did not take action. In addition, there was a, a school trip where the incidents got more severe during this trip. End of the trip, my child went to the bathroom to cry after the trip. And the teachers went in there and essentially scolded her and said, why are you doing this? You need to, you need to leave, you know, so they, they coaxed her out of the bathroom. And instead of listening and understanding what she was going through, they just scolded her and asked her to leave. By the end of that school year, the last couple of weeks, she no longer wanted to go to school and we could not get her out of the car. We notified principal, we notified counselor, counselor tried to come into the car, the vehicle, to try to coax her out of the car. But the experience was so bad and so severe that she didn't wanna go to school anymore. And one thing to keep in mind, we didn't know this at the time, she wouldn't talk to us, we didn't know what was happening. So we were just trying to get her to school, we were trying to have her end the school year and, you know, finish with all her classes and all her classwork. Later on, we hear the rest of the story about what happened, next school year comes, she's going to school on and off. And, um, it was a very challenging year. And, you know, I don't think she was able to learn much in terms of her education, because in, in my words, I'm not a professional in this field, but in my, my views and my observations, she was traumatized and she is highly anxious and just could not go, go to school. Uh, now, now we're going into the current year, she continues to be challenged, she went to school for maybe a week, week and a half, and the experience was, was, um, was pretty unbearable for her. And I actually submitted some meeting minutes from the 504 program that explained the details in the staff's words of what she experienced in those first couple of weeks of school. So if you look at those minutes or those notes that I took and I sent to the staff, you'll see all of the, the characterization by your own staff of what my daughter experienced. You know, at that point, we made a decision that that wasn't gonna work, that we needed to take an alternative path. I believe she was on a 504 program. In between, my, my daughter, my, my daughter was going to doctor's appointments, both for mental health and for physical doctors. She was pulled out of school, she had appointments, my wife kept the school district informed of what her situation was. And, and I don't wanna get into the details, but my report states what happened after that. And so, so despite us keeping the, the school district informed, in addition, we had a letter from a health professional that described my daughter's situation, and regardless of that, in two thousand and eighteen, the school district still decided to move forward with the actions that was taken. My, those details are provided in the report.
Okay, fifteen seconds left, sir.
So what I wanna ask here is that, I know you're considering the, the 504 plan, what I'm asking for is that you really take a close look at that 504 plan? You look at the performance of the employees who are working with that 504 plan? I have seen examples of what I would call less than.
So that's time, I'm sorry.
Far performance.
Do you have anything in writing that you wanted to submit? We, we allow four minutes for board comments?
Uh, I did, I already submitted my information.
Okay.
If I may ask for additional, maybe thirty additional seconds?
I can't grant it, sir. I'm sorry.
Can I make a motion to allow any more seconds?
You can make a motion to waive the policy twelve thirty.
I make a motion to waive policy twelve thirty.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those.
Yeah, you know, we've totally waived it, or are we talking about a time, certain time limit?
Give him a minute.
I just wonder.
Yeah, give him a minute.
So one more minute?
So the motion was to waive it, there was a second for that.
You're amending it?
Yeah.
You're asking to amend it? To a minute?
Yep, I would agree to that.
I need a second for the amendment.
Second for the amendment.
Comments or questions? So just so you know, we're voting on, we're voting on the amendment to the motion, the motion was to waive policy twelve thirty. The amendment was to stipulate that it would be a minute. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion, comments or questions now that that passed? I need a, um, comments, uh, sorry, discussion on waiving policy twelve thirty with the stipulation of it being one minute longer.
I think since we don't have a lot of public comment tonight and this doesn't seem to be an issue that will continue on for much longer, you ask for thirty more seconds and we can certainly proceed.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? All right, motion carried, you got one more minute, sir.
Thank you so much for that. So in, in closing, really what I wanna do is advocate for my child, who has gone through so much over the last two years and my family as well, has gone through a lot. So I would just ask that you pay close attention to this particular situation. Uh, and, and two, just some feedback on the 504 program. I don't feel that that program allows for, for somebody to advocate on behalf of the family or in front of, or on behalf of the child. I have to come in here, risk the confidentiality to be able to advocate for my child, to kind of state my case, share my experiences. And so I would ask that going forward, you would consider a mechanism so that we can have a strong advocate on behalf of the child, including allowing the child for themselves to advocate on their own behalf and explain what they're going through, because nobody views it more accurately than what they're viewing it from their eyes. Thank you very much for the extra time and your attention, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So, I don't know if you followed up, I know that you said in your comments that you talked to the principal, there should be a 504 committee that convenes and stuff, and usually that could get addressed at a 504 committee meeting. Um, if she has a 504, if you're looking to, to institute a 504, you can have a 504 committee that would convene on behalf and that would typically take place at a 504 committee meeting and you could go that route. I'm sure if you need assistance with that, Dr. Wendell and or Matt or one of the administrators could help you out. When we go into executive session, I know Eric's up there and the assistant supervisor is in there as well, they might be able to talk to you about that process.
I've gone through that process.
Okay.
And I still think that there's opportunities for improvement and the meetings.
I, I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure that you had that information. Any other public comments? All right, see, now I'm gonna close up into the public. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment issue of particular individuals.
So moved.
So, can we add, are we getting legal advice as well?
It didn't state it in the motion.
Yeah, so are we though? So did I amend the motion or not?
No.
No? Okay, all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried, seven oh. Stay standing, let's all rise for a moment of silence for Gloria McKenna, who retired as a food service department in the Beacon City School District. Thank you. All right, we have a couple additions to the agenda. One additional item is on instructional personnel list, twelve point oh four L three, and that is on the board docs, that change has already been made. We also are adding resolution zero one, well, I'm gonna ask for a motion for resolution zero one one three two O A, which it states, resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve administrative leave for employee number five three one five pending a district investigation. Be it further resolved that the Board hereby authorizes the Board President to execute such agreement on behalf, on, on the Board's behalf. Um, I need a motion to add that to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
That was you, Kristen, answering second?
Yep.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried, seven oh. All right. Any student or school presentations? Any parent groups? We already had open to the public, so we're gonna go over to the superintendent's report.
Just wanted to briefly highlight a couple of things coming up. Uh, we will be putting out a schedule in the next couple of weeks of both PTO meetings and also just some meetings with the public regarding the budget process. And we're also gonna be informing folks in the coming month or two about some initial first steps with the capital project. We tentatively are planning to be putting together another capital project, possibly for about December twenty twenty. This all needs to be kind of worked out a little bit, but we wanna do some public information about it and start gathering information about what people are expecting or not expecting, changes people wanna see in our facilities. So that will be coming up in February, March, and I'll be working on that schedule over the next week or two and it'll be public probably by the next board meeting.
Great.
That's all I have.
All right. We're gonna start out with the best report of the evening, Grace.
Hi, everyone, just a few things going on in school. Um, the cast list for the two new Beacon High Beacon players plays are out, so those kids are very excited to work on that. Um, with our sports teams, the boys just had a big home win tonight, so they're now four and nine and the girls are six and seven. So basketball's very fun for us, like, it's very exciting, draws a big crowd, love that. And the seniors, the senior class is, we're organizing a lot of things. We get to start picking our senior quotes, submitting that, our baby pictures, and we're gonna start voting on our class trip. So that'll be very exciting.
Thank you, Grace, and thank you for your patience while you were in there. All right, we're gonna move to F and M, Kristen?
Uh, I, I actually am gonna start with a question, are we gonna have a meeting this Wednesday? We usually have it right after the board meeting, but I didn't think we had scheduled.
No, we moved it.
We did, I didn't know if that was an extra, or we moved it because, so we, we, can we say that we just selected or?
On agenda, right?
No, it's on the agenda for the twenty seventh.
Potential.
Potential agenda item.
The, the administrators are making a recommendation to the board for January twenty seventh.
Okay. Related to the capital project, we are, we were, we went through a process of looking at architecture firms, architecture engineering firms to work with and the reason why we're not having this meeting this Wednesday is we moved it to last week so that we could interview the finalists that were brought to us by the administrative team. And we look forward to the recommendation that they'll be on the agenda for the twenty seventh. The possible finalist is, is a firm, I don't even know.
You could say.
It's so weird, like, you don't know how to talk sometimes these things, like, what we love to say.
Yeah.
Uh, just talk normally. Um, we're really excited about the firm that we, the two, the two firms that we interviewed were really great and had, it was a really interesting process, but we got a lot of good feedback. And we're very excited about the firm that we've chosen, they seem to have a lot of, all of the technical expertise, but then also a special kind of excitement and interest about the potential for learning spaces. And I encourage everybody when they finally start coming to come to the F and M meeting and meet them. And hopefully they'll also come with us out to a lot of these public meetings to take input about the next project. And I think that they'll come up with some, they, they spend a lot of time in our buildings and I think they'll have a really unique perspective and help guide us to improving our facilities.
Okay, can I just ask, just cause I don't think, new to this process, is it typical to contract the architecture firm before we know what the projects they're going to develop?
Yeah, it, I mean, they, they really, they really have to help us develop the building and condition survey. Their expertise is what guides us, because, um, I think that there's a bunch of levels of the process. One is the financial, like what's possible in terms of how we make the most of the dollars that we are able to get. Then they also look at, they know what the, how to prioritize what we do in our buildings, a project this size. But then in addition, I think, I don't know if it's unique to Beacon, but it feels like we always have a long list of things we need to bring up to standard and at the same time, we still wanna do something nice and programmatic, you know, fun for the students. So we really need a firm that helps us with that. I think you'll really like these guys, they were very, it was, I can say after several years of sitting through facilities meetings that this one was super fun. And that they, there was a lot of really interesting design elements and work that they've done in other places. And I'm not saying the name of the firm, but they'll be on the agenda in the future. That's it.
Any questions? Policy change?
Yeah, we just had a, our first policy meeting of the new year. We have several policies on the agenda tonight, ready for a first read. Our next meeting is on February third, and I have us at seven P M., but we're going to have to do a double meeting. We have quite a lot of policies that we're looking at. I hope we're not overloading the rest of the board.
I am not in favor for another double meeting because we were supposed to have a double meeting this time and we didn't, but yet we stayed a double amount of time.
Yeah, and the conversations were fruitful.
For some of you.
I would say each policy takes the amount of work and time it takes to get it done. So it would've taken that amount of time to spread throughout for many meetings we had. But there's, we, there's no way we can get through everything we have in the agenda in one hour. So I think we have something, ten plus policies we're looking at next week.
I think the advice.
February third?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, just to, Jim, James, I think the advice we got, it's, one of the recommendations was actually, so we have, I think, some of them. We should comment on now, so that maybe we can get some answers by email and then, and then I guess add to it.
Sure, of course.
Is legal attending the meetings?
They're on the call.
They're called, yeah.
Which is actually, last meeting was the first time we used that, it's very, very helpful.
Phone friend.
Yeah, phone friend.
Yeah, who's driving?
So what do we, we do a double?
I'm in not favor of it.
Okay, well, I'll schedule it.
I think it's, it can't become a practice, right? We had two meetings that, we're asking for two double meetings in a row. So, I mean, I don't think it should be a practice. When you're doing it twice in a row, it's becoming a practice of it. I think so. I mean, I understand the goal and the initiative and stuff, but.
Are you coming at this from being the person who has to be present in all the board committee meetings too? Like it's.
That and the efficiency of it as well, right? I mean, the F and L weeks, when we have to meet, it's like usually once a year that we had, like we had a marathon meeting this Wednesday.
For interview.
Right, for interviews. And I got that, we were gonna do a lot of them, but we only did what was on the typical agenda part for.
A little bit more, but.
So that's just, I'm one of.
The only way we're gonna get through this is if we can do, occasionally have to do double.
Or I think that if we submit the questions ahead of time for any policies that you have, and then, then that's at least being more efficient. Whereas then it gets there and then like nitpicking at the, like some of the words is like.
That's just what policy is. That's what we do there.
I disagree with that, but.
But, you know, if we rubber stamp everything we've.
I'm not saying rubber stamp it, but I mean, there were some things that asked me if the flag is cloth or plastic or, or a bikini, so.
I mean, it's just the nature, the whole point of having a policy committee meeting is so that we can make sure that the, the Board is actually reviewing all of the policies that come to us and not rubber stamping everything because we are unique.
So I think that the 7 o'clock is the last one on that date. The 7:00 PM is the last committee meeting on that date. So then we'd set it for 7:00 and then we could see how it's going.
Sure, I'm over that. If anyone needs to, we have three there, we have a full, so if you need to leave, you can.
I mean, I think we need to prioritize like what the, if you're submitting questions ahead of time, the ones that you're most concerned about achieving that night and making sure you have the maximum number of members for those and then things that are of more interest. I don't know if that helps because.
I mean, I think that we all know we're trying to get quite a lot done because we have so much to do. And, you know, this is a big task, so we have kind of an accelerated schedule. Some policies are gonna require more conversation than others, some are gonna go very quickly. It's not always easy to know until we're in discussion, hear everyone's perspective. Certainly I think we could try to email ahead of time as much as we can, yeah.
I mean, I would prefer a double meeting over putting two meetings in one month. So I think that's how I look at it.
Agreed.
Because we do have a lot of work to do.
Well, we have the agenda set. It's pretty hefty, let's get to see what we can get through in the amount of time we have.
Okay, any questions for James?
Just one, to reiterate, as you make changes to policies, if you just, if we can highlight them or redline them or something, so that when we get them, we can easily see.
Right, absolutely. Kelly, we have talked about submitting two versions, sort of the initial NISBA recommended language and any changes that we have. Do we have that, or Amory, do we have that? We talked about doing that moving forward, is having, presenting the Board with the original draft as it was presented to the committee or a previous version of a replacing policy in our new language.
So to reflect the changes that the committee made at the table?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
On the agenda?
On the agenda, yeah.
Amory, are you asking for revisions to policies that we've already agreed to before? Or are you talking about new policies that are replacing the old system?
Mostly ones that are replacing the old ones. And we can say, well, this one was in place and now here's the changes, so it gets easier to dig in. If it's new, it's nice to know that as well, hey, this is a brand new policy and I didn't capture that on these, these.
Yeah, so. So hey, this is new. To my memory, we had talked about doing this and not making all of the previous drafts available to the public, but available for us on board docs.
The first read was gonna be in public and the other ones were gonna be in executive content.
Okay.
So.
That's what I believe we agreed upon.
So just to be responsive to Mike, I don't know if the old policies, because what happens is the old policy written by someone else. And they don't exactly line up in terms of paragraph by paragraph. So you, you may not get that, get that, you know, like that red line strikeout you're looking for on that.
Oh, if that's the case, if it's not easily, easy to do.
When we're replacing policy, that's definitely the case. We do get, the policy committee is oftentimes what we have is the boilerplate NISBA, kind of generally approved for New York State policy. And then we kind of think about what our community needs and what our, I talked to Matt Consol, figure out what's right for us and if any language needs to be tweaked within that. So we can certainly provide those two ahead.
Okay, then, you know, then if you at least said this is new, or this is, you know, we're developing this from boilerplate, or this is an update of an existing, maybe only those.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable to me.
If it's, if it's too much of a pain now, just, otherwise you might read them as like, okay, this is a brand new thing, I'm gonna read everything and, you know, look at every word.
Well, that was, I think I was thinking about making it all available to the public as well as, people might get confused having three or four versions of the same thing.
It was definitely tricky with the, I tried to keep up with the code of conduct, but even that was like we. Looking at, so if it's similar enough, I don't know, there's, I don't feel like I have any right to have any ideas for you about this because I think it's a big task and I don't know the right way to do this. It's a lot of work. I think prioritizing and anything that's standard.
I think also, we got a little bit behind over the break, now we're kinda playing catch up as well, so. Let's see how this next one goes. I'm good, no more comments.
Any other questions? Craig?
Thank you. So I'm also pleased with the presentations by the two architectural firms. I would add that I particularly like that they are large firms that have a lot of in-house engineering expertise as well as architecture. So it's like if you're in, in a company and you need the expertise that, that Sue has, you go over to her desk. If you need the expertise that Charlie has, you go over to his desk. You don't have to go out of house or down the street or whatever. So I think it leads to a better integrated plan. Sometimes specialists go off on their own tangents and then we find the results look like it was done by committee and that can be a problem. So we're on a good track, I think. I attended the Dutchess County School Boards Association meeting. I'm the alternate there when Meredith is unavailable. Very interesting presentation by Stuart Waxman, who happens to be one of the attorneys that represents our district, who's our chief negotiator for the teachers' contract. And that will be coming up again before we know it, although it seems like we just finished it not long ago. It's a important negotiation. He presented some information about the relative salary levels vis a vis other districts in Dutchess County and the benefits packages. And if I can get ahold of a digital version of that, I'll forward it to the members of the Board. It makes interesting reading, I think James was just asking for some of that kind of data so we can take a closer look at it. The presentation included a number of trends that are going on that he's aware of because he does this kind of negotiating for a number of other districts in the area and keeps a close eye on what's happening. And some of the interesting changes are things like adding pre-steps and half-steps into existing teachers' salary schedules. You've seen some of that. Flat dollar increases to salary schedule applications. Capping credits in number and dollar cost expenditure on duly acquired credits. Some of this gets a little wonky unless you're really deep into the teaching profession, but it certainly winds up affecting how attractive we are and what the total cost of the packages might be. Another trend is reducing sick leave. Changing health insurance plan options, additional time for professional development. That particularly applies to us, we've done quite a bit in that area. The New York State budget came out, this is sort of the kickoff of the budget game, if you will, when the governor makes his annual message, and he did. There was nothing in there that would cause me to get excited about big increases in school aid, let me put it that way. We're still looking at a fairly large deficit in the budget. His comments on the matter were not super specific and we have not seen what the specific numbers are, as Mrs. Corderoni mentioned earlier, but that's coming pretty soon. I say it's the kickoff in the game, it's probably more like a game of badminton or tennis because the governor gets to make the first lob and then the Senate and the Assembly can take their shots at the birdie and it gets batted over the net a few times until it settles out sometime, hopefully by the beginning of April. So we'll be watching that closely. And then pretty soon, I think, we'll be in a position to do some advocacy of our own when we see a few more specifics on the table. Speaking of New York State Senate, there is already an active campaign going on for the seat that includes Beacon and that is held currently by Sue Serino, a veteran Republican. And she is challenged by Karen Smythe, and it's pronounced Smythe, S-M-Y-T-H-E. I have that direct from the guy who gave her that name. And she is a very well-spoken, serious contender in the Democratic Party. She had a little affair in Beacon recently where I got a chance to meet her for the first time and talk a bit about school district issues. So grab it while it gets good. So that's, that's my report for today.
Any questions for Craig? Alright, Flora?
Yeah, so we had our latest wellness committee meeting and during the meeting, we split up into subcommittees, which was actually pretty useful. And so we had people who were sort of relevant to different discussions, talking about nutrition and, you know, what we're doing around physical fitness. And then one of the committees was communications. And so one of our goals as a committee is to make sure that the community is more aware of what's happening at the district level, but also at the building level in terms of mental health, physical health, nutrition, and also sustainability, which we're sort of rolling into that discussion as well. And so we put together a flyer, I guess you could, you could call it. And I think, Matt, you said you're, you're going to send it out tomorrow. So it'll be going out to everyone in the district, all the families, and we'll be blasting it out on social media as well. Just so everybody can sort of learn about all of these great initiatives that are happening because one thing you realize is we would have these discussions in the committee meeting and we hear about all of these great ideas. And I think it's useful for different schools to know what, what's happening and maybe borrow a great idea or just to understand that there, there is progress being made, there are things happening in these, in these areas. So the newsletter is, is pretty lengthy and, and every school got a, and, and every related department got a chance to sort of give their input about what was going on. The big marquee news for the newsletter is that the Family Fitness Night and Wellness Fair is happening this Friday. That's for grades K through eight, it's at Ronbault Middle School. I think it starts at, does it start at 7:00? Do we know?
I think so.
I think so. Anyway, you'll know when you get the newsletter.
I, I just, I would check the flyer, I think it might say the high school.
No, it says Ronbault Middle School.
It does, okay, alright.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Okay, good, well, we got ours today, but for some reason I put it on the front of high school. You haven't.
Yeah, yeah, it's at, it's at Ronbault, and it actually starts at 6:00, it's 6:00 to 8:00. And so there's going to be a bunch of different activities, all the physical education. Teachers will be there helping to run sessions and they'll be geared towards students and also their parents. So we hope that everybody can make it out. And our next wellness committee meeting is, it's always the first Wednesday of the month, so it's gonna be Wednesday, February 5th, I think it is, 4:00 PM at Beacon High School. And you never know what Dr. Rollon has planned. So it's always good to show up just to see what happens. And yeah, so I hope that we'll get an even bigger group next time. That's it.
Any questions? Great job, Flora. Anthony?
So the diversity committee in the school district met last month and, and again, it was a similar format. We split into three groups, we talked about the code of conduct. We talked about hiring and I forgot what Matt's group was, because I wasn't in Matt's group.
More inclusive practices for students with special needs.
Thank you very much. And it was very interactive, posts, notes were flying everywhere and it, it was, it was, it, it warmed my heart that it was truly an engaging, engaging with the community exercise. So, you know, I hope we continue with that effort on that. Do I include my one note report too, or just a community report?
This is your time.
Oh, okay. So I, I wanna say that three of us also attended the square end ceremony for the City Beacon Council. And two, myself and Bill were, at behalf of the Lions Club, were at the, the Three Kings Day, which is ceremony was on Sunday, which was an immersion experience of Latin culture there. That's it, I'm done.
Okay. Didn't wanna cut you off, I was making sure.
Your foot's running out, I'm not sure why.
That's a question about the diversity committee meeting. Did, was there, can you summarize kind of what the, the general feeling was, particularly around the discussion on the code of conduct?
I wasn't in that group.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but Eric was running it, if you want.
We're, we're trying to have these groups be a little more action oriented, so Eric's group is working on, we're putting out a survey to students, not necessarily specifically about how they feel about the code of conduct, but just their connectedness to school. And that also fits into the dignity work. Bill, his subgroup is working on our plan for hiring a more diverse workforce. And I was kind of with my group brainstorming some steps we're taking to help make the district more inclusive. So, so each meeting, we kinda try to bring back more of what we're doing and then get feedback from the people who choose to be with our subgroup is kind of the model. And we're meeting this Thursday at 7:45.
Has the public been positive in those, those discussions?
Yeah.
This Thursday, 7:45, is diversity?
Yes.
Eric, you have any update for curriculum?
My next meeting is Wednesday, the 15th, January 15th at 2:30. We will be looking at data, state assessments, and then moving forward with, beginning the process of looking at new course proposals in a high school.
Okay, great, thank you. Mike, any more comments?
Yes, I do appreciate the, the presentation we had about the budget and especially wanted to recognize, because you kinda went through it pretty quickly, we talk about the, the mission, vision, skills and abilities, attributes and dispositions. But you know, this is a culmination of a lot of great work for the past probably year and a half of really digging in and saying, what, what, what do we want success to look like? And there's a lot of information here, but it also is really well put together. So, you know, really, when you look at it, it's pretty impressive and it's a good, you know, good vision. And tying into the budget about how are we gonna, how are we gonna get there and tying the, you know, the budget allocations, you know, to our programs. I am interested, obviously, in the, the budget cycle. And really, this year, we're seeing how we can start working on efficiencies, you know, doing, you know, with what we have, being able to, you know, address a lot of these areas with what we have. So very interested in seeing what's proposed in those areas. Okay, that's all I have.
Great. The only comment I have is I received an email today.
The only comment I have is I received an email today regarding the Board of Regents and the State Education Department. And they're doing a three-phase, how to look at what high school students need to graduate or what benchmarks. So, they're really asking five essential questions. What do, what do you want students to know and to be able to do before they graduate? How do you want students to demonstrate such knowledge and skills? How do you measure learning and achievement as it pertains to answers to question number two above to ensure that they are indicators of high school completion? How can measures of achievement accurately reflect the skills and knowledge of our special populations, such as students with disabilities and ELL, or English language learners? And what course requirements or examinations will ensure that students are prepared for college and career or civic engagement? So, they have, from November 2019 to April 2020, that's phase one, that's the informational stage. So, they do have Board of Regents coming to local areas. So, Lester Y. Young, Regents at Large, hosting for the ninth district, which is us, will be at Ouybosse's 129, 2020, from four to seven. And that's at the Carl Oakin Conference Center. And if you can't make that one, you, the other closest one is Ulster Bosse's. But that, they're District Three. And that's by Josephine Finn, and that's not until March 11th. But if you cannot attend, there is a website that you could go to submit your answers to the questions so they could be considered. This is really looking at the state looking to revamp. There has been talk about them doing away with Regents exams. So, this might be tying into that piece. So, that was the first phase, is the information gathering and learning. Phase two is September 2020, and it's the Blue Ribbon Commissions. And that goes to fall of 2021 and the winter of 2022. And then, in phase three is the Regents' Discussion, which is winter of 2022. The Blue Ribbon Commissioners' final report is presented to the Board of Regents for consideration. So, it's really, they're taking, they're doing the opposite of what they did with the state testing and PPR and stuff, their, their kinder time, and do it their own examination and making sure they're getting all constituents involved. But it is interesting to look at. I know when we were at NISBA and you listened to the Board of Regents Chancellor speak then and interim commissioner, when they were looking for the new commissioner for New York State, they're looking for a commissioner that focuses on the social-emotional pieces of learning, teaching the soft skills and really looking at what employers are looking for. And a lot of employers are saying that they could teach them the job. They just need to know the soft skills, make sure they're on time for work and stuff like that. So, I thought it was pretty interesting. No other comment?
I've, we moved on from the diversity discussion. And I just wanted to add, this was based on a recommendation of Alyssa, who isn't here tonight, but she had recommended this. There's a podcast called Revisionist History. And season two, episode three, the title is Ms. Buchanan's Period of Adjustment. And I'll forward it to the board. But it's about, it's a look at Brown versus Board of Education. And it was one of the most, especially in being on the Board of a diverse district, one of the most interesting pieces of journalism and examining something that I think we all assume is a certain means one thing. And listed it from a very different way. And it goes directly to the goals we have around hiring and the importance of them. So, it's really worth listening to.
Will you hand that to us?
Yeah, I will. Oh, no, I planned on it, but I just wanted to.
All right. Discussion, budget vote of an election, reorganization meeting. So, Matt sent us some literature. There were some legislation passed regarding that we can open the polls for voting. We typically open now, we go from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, Emery. And so, I think it now allows us to open up at 6:00 AM. So, we need to discuss, do we want to access and open the polls up at 6:00? Or are we okay from 7:00 to 9:00?
Well, let's see, 6:00, who would that advantage? I think we need to get some data here, like, how many people show up at 7:00? And do we have any anecdotal or other evidence that people would come between 6:00 and 7:00? Since basically, we're only talking about adding an hour at the front end, right?
Right.
What do we know?
That would be?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if we can tell.
Probably not.
Let's try. You know, I mean, one thing, yeah. I mean, one thing, the only way to really get a number is to do it and see if we can get people.
But we don't write the time. Like, I've never been asked for my, I'm one of those 6:58 people and wait. And so, when it opens at 7:00, I go there. But they don't ask me my time that I'm going there.
Right. You know, I don't know if the machines don't keep a record of that? Of how many, who voted, how many voted at what?
None. So, that's the other part of the conversation is we're not gonna have the machines. It's gonna be done paper ballot.
Oh, okay.
So.
And we have to end at 9:00 as a mandated cutoff date? We can't go later?
You have to do what, eight hours, Emery?
Nine o'clock is the time that it has to end.
Yeah, it has to end at 9:00. But I think it has to be open for eight hours. Like, I know some districts.
It has to be open for nine consecutive hours.
Nine consecutive, all right. I was saying.
We can't go later than nine o'clock.
You have to do nine hours. So, like, some districts start it at noon and go to nine o'clock.
Right. I was just thinking, we have a large commuter population.
Yeah, of small cities.
We've just got a large commuter population that leaves to New York City early and comes back late.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I take the 6:16 train, so.
That's not gonna help you anyway.
You can make six o'clock and still make it to the train.
Yeah, good.
Well, also, it's better if we don't get there later. I mean, personally, I would think that going until 10:00 would have more of an effect on people. But if we can't do that.
Yeah, I mean, personally, my default's 6:32 because that actually gets me in the Grand Central four minutes after. But it's more crowded, so that's why 6:16.
Is there significant cost to adding an hour?
There's cost, I don't know how significant.
Yeah, no, actually, when I read that, I wasn't under the impression that there was a choice. I think it just was, I thought it was just extending the hours.
This is what it is.
We don't have to, right? We don't have to. It could be, we could keep it as is.
I'm in favor of having it as open as possible, you know, to all people. I'm in favor of six o'clock.
That's the assumption. I thought that we were gonna come to, but it's not like you have to.
I think.
So, are we saying six?
Yeah, you want a motion or?
No, we'll put it on the next agenda. It's not a pressing. We'll put it on the next agenda item as a vote.
I have a question, just, it's related, but not directly related. We talked last year, I feel like shortly before the last election, about having a discussion about the size of the board and what that process would be because I think that has to go to a ballot. And then, we talked around it, but never actually put it on the agenda for discussion.
We have talked about it before, actually.
Not since.
I don't think that's germane to this conversation here.
Right.
So, I would just say, next meeting, bring that up or?
Or can we put it on the agenda for discussion for next meeting?
Board size again? We've had that discussion like a nauseam. It was over and over again.
Not since I've been on the board.
I can give you a date if you give me a.
I'll give you the legal papers that we received from our legal last time. I won't ask them to write it up again. Save some money. But yeah, I could give it to you. That's fine.
But if we come to the board, when that board have the discussion, do it come to a resolution as to?
Yeah, not to do it.
I think it was because there's a, there's something about the, it was something from legal, right? I mean, I'm willing to look at it again because the.
It's not an easy process, but it's like you would, so we do three board members per year. It would be something like you would do three, then two, then two, then two, or something like that. I'm fine with that. I'll add it on there and I'll forward whatever information I have from the past. Okay, so the other part of the discussion was the reorganization meeting. So, the state has passed legislation. Was it legislation?
Yes.
That city schools no longer have to, they could abide by the same rules as central school districts and union free school districts that we don't have to meet within the first week of July. So, city schools always had to meet within the first week of July for the rework meeting.
You'd never hear.
So, now, they're saying that you could meet within the first 15 days, which is the same as central school districts and of sort.
What are your thoughts on how to handle that?
I'm thinking we meet in the first week. Just because it's so hard to come up with dates for people.
The problem, of course, is that the Fourth of July always occurs on the Fourth of July. So, it screws up the vacation schedules and so on. When some people try to combine a vacation with the Fourth of July, it depends exactly where it falls within the calendar relative to weekends typically. So, you kind of have to look at it in advance and get some idea of what's gonna be most suitable. And perhaps all of us as members should be thinking about our own vacation plans and coordinating that with, I don't know, who? Maybe the board president, superintendent, or the clerk to see that we can have a good turnout for our organizational meeting without wrecking any vacation.
Well, this year, July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd are Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So, maybe July 1st would be the.
I mean, I personally will never be here for that, which is why I'm interested in this rule change.
Would the change make you able to be there?
Yes. So, it's a pretty big deal to me.
When do you come back?
We usually are back the weekend after July 4th. Like, so wherever July 4th falls.
That's a Saturday this year.
Yeah, then I would be back on Sunday.
The 11th. Oh, the 5th.
Right. And it's basically the same every year, so.
We should be able to pick a date every year. As long as we have a lead, we have up to 15 days and we can all agree.
We don't have to do that now. It's just saying that we have the option now to go to the 15th.
Good.
One other thing on the boat about having a board meeting that night or the day after because of paper ballots.
Right, so because we asked about the machines and it's gonna be paper ballot, why is that, Emery? I forget the rationale for that.
There's a primary before and a primary after. There's a primary in April and a primary in June. And the Dutchess, what is it? The Board of Election is not allowing us to use the machines. So, every district in Dutchess County is facing the same issue. So, we're paper balloting.
So, the second part of that conversation about, okay, we're gonna do six o'clock, we'll put that on, is we usually have the canvas of votes meeting that night. A lot of districts do it the next night. So, you have an official count when you, when the board certifies.
So, we'll have paper ballots by hand, right?
I mean, in passing a machine, we would have, Kelly would be at one of them. There would be people here, they'd bring it down and, you know, they could do it a little bit. But with the paper ballot, we should.
We should expect for the next day, so.
We should expect the next day meeting.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah. Now, we save money by not using their machines.
We'd be, our personnel costs will greatly increase.
I see, okay. So, we're losing ones.
We're about to cheaper.
All right. Am I forgetting anything, Emery?
When to count them? The counting is still up in the air as well. So, the way we staff will depend upon how we count.
I think that it would be important that we give an unofficial, right? You know how a lot, all the districts on that night give an unofficial count?
Counts.
Like, it passed. Like, I think there needs to be something. We may be the only district that, I don't know how the other, I mean, I would say, let's try and stay consistent with the area. If they're gonna give, if the other districts are giving unofficial count, I don't want to be the one that's not given unofficial count, right? I don't, I know it's not gonna be official counting because if, especially if it's people counting, you gotta check it and recheck it. But I don't want to be the only district to give it. I don't want to be the only district not to give it.
So, I know there's been a lot of discussion as well with the district clerk so we can find out what everyone else is doing. I don't, you know, some of the smaller districts, it won't be.
Some of them only have a couple hundred voters.
Right.
But I mean, I would see where our locals.
Some of the barter wabingers are still doing paper ballots as well. So, they're much bigger.
I think if it's within a margin of error, it would be okay to release an unofficial. You would never want a situation where you say, like, the budget didn't pass and the next day you're like, oh, no, it did. You know, you'd never want that.
Yeah, I mean, so, but I would say, see what other districts are doing similar. We're good? Clemson has one. All right, the use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of item, business under consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issues. Is there anything that a board member would like pulled from the agenda consent?
Yeah, I would pull 12.19.
Anything else? Hearing none. And don't forget, I added Resolution 011320A. I added that as 12.21 on the consent agenda, so just so you know. So, I need a motion to approve 12.01 through 12.21 minus 12.19.
So moved, second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried, 7-0. Any motion for 12.19?
Motion to approve 12.19, which is policy 91401, staff complaints and grievances. First read.
Yep, second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
The third paragraph of this says, "This policy and regulation shall be filed with the district clerk and the State Civil Service Commission within 15 days of adoption and/or amendment as required." So, are we, you know, will we be prepared? This is a new policy, right? So, would we be prepared within 15 days? Because it says the policy and regulation. I don't know how, just how we go about doing that to meet this requirement.
You mean the filing part?
The regulation.
Yeah, because the policy is one thing, but regulations are procedure, right? You have to, do we have a, I was interested to know, do we have the regulation ready to go? Maybe by, maybe we will by the time we approve this. But I just want to make sure we can comply.
Yeah, we'll make sure we have it. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried, 7-0. Any motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried, 7-0, like 9:23. That's all, folks.